On all matters before the commission other than site plans or preliminary subdivision plaits. The commission's decision to approve or deny a site plan or preliminary subdivision plat is the final decision by the city unless the applicant appeals to the city council. So you'll need to contact the city clerk or community development department staff for details on those council hearings. This evening, the applicant will be given 10 minutes to present the request. Proponents and then opponents are allowed to speak with each speaker allowed a maximum of five minutes. The applicant will then be allowed five minutes for rebuttal time. After the rebuttal, if that's necessary, the hearing will then be closed and after a motion, the commission will discuss and vote on the issue. All comments are to be germane to the item under consideration and speakers are to maintain a courteous manner. Items listed on the consent portion of the agenda will not be individually discussed and we have one... We have three items on the consent agenda and we'll get to those in a minute. Will be considered for approval in accordance with the recommendation in the staff report unless an individual present or the member of the commission requests the item be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately under the public hearing agenda. The City of Des Moines is pleased to provide accommodations to individuals or groups with disabilities and encourages participation in city government. To better serve you when possible, please notify us at least three business days in advance and at area code 515-2834-209 should special accommodations be required. Assisted listening devices are also available for meetings in the council chambers. The Planning and Zoning Commission meetings are broadcast on MediaCom Cable Channel 7 for customers with that service. The broadcast is also streamed live in real-time on the City of Des Moines website at www.dmgov.org. Need to click the "Watch Live" link for those meetings. Kathy Webb-Corme, the Corm being present. Is there a motion for approval of the minutes?
(inaudible)
Get it? Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same item, are you abstaining? Ted's abstaining.
I'm abstaining.
Will's abstaining.
Christine, Nikki, Will, and Ted.
Okay. Anybody else? Um... The motion. No, you don't want it? Okay, all right.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sure, you ready on?
Number five.
On number five?
Yep. I'd like to make a motion for the commission's consideration to continue item number five. I'll give you just a little background on why I'm making this request. One of the key stakeholders in this hearing, the Wayland Park Neighborhood Association, supports this request for continuance. The Neighborhood Association did not receive the comment cards from the city. However, I want to make sure this is on the record, the city absolutely did provide the association with three sets of comment cards from the end of August to the middle of September. The current interim president of the association was out of the country and didn't pick up the mail about the past month. Just returned to the country yesterday and the comment cards were in the mail. And Clear Channel also made an effort to contact the association as well. As a result of that kind of glitch in the mail, residents were not informed about this matter. The association's board was not able to reach out to folks and get consensus and they would like to be able to do that if the applicant is willing to agree to continuance and if the commission also is comfortable with that as well.
Chair members of the commission, Jason Madison with the city's planning staff. Thanks Christine for elaborating and letting everybody know that we did do our normal process. The notices were gone out. The applicant was given the contact information that we had and filed through the Neighborhood Association and made an effort, phone, email, and letter. I would encourage you and I think Christine suggested that we talk to the applicant to hear whether they're comfortable with the continuance. We do also owe people, you know, due process and our processes were followed. It is somewhat the responsibility of the Neighborhood Association to do their end of the job. I know that it can be challenging if you have somebody that's gone for an extended period of time, but anyway, I'd like to offer that up.
Is the applicant present? Give us your name and address, please.
Jason Pomeranki with Clear Channel Outdoor, 4131 109th Street in Urberville, Iowa.
Okay. Are you all right with the continuance or?
Yes. If that would help out in any way.
All right, great. Okay.
It's all new to me, so.
Thank you. Any discussion? And it's gonna... I'll work one second.
Okay. One second.
Everybody understand the motion?
Continue to what?
Continue to next, to the next meeting, I would imagine.
Yeah, I think it's gotta be, and talking to the applicant with their schedule and stuff, it's gotta be the next meeting. And so it would be helpful, I think, if we, if, is Will...
It's Will Rogers.
Is he back?
Well, he returned yesterday. However, I should clarify too, there will be a meeting next Wednesday night that will elect a new board members and also a new permanent president and Will is not running for that position, so your contact won't be Will.
Well, is there, and maybe we could, Will'll talk after the meeting, but I think it'd be good if that could be coordinated, that meeting, because we're gonna very quick turn around.
What's the date on that, the next meeting? October?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth?
Fourteenth, yeah.
Today plus fourteen.
Fourteen?
October seventeenth.
Ted's over here. Yeah, yeah, I see how it is, okay. Throwing me under the bus, anyway. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. No opposition, yeah. Acclamation, it passes. I did tell you I had shots in my feet, right? Anyway, moving on, consent items. There are three of those, let me read them for you. The first one is review and recommendation to city council regarding a petition to establish Beaver Avenue SMID for maintenance of the proposed Beaver Avenue Streetscape improvements. Is there anyone here in opposition to that item? In opposition? Seeing none. The second one is a city-initiated request represented by the city engineer Jeb Brewer for vacation of a segment of southeast Fourth Street running 100 feet north of Shaw Street, east of the adjoining, east and adjoining property located at 626 southeast Fourth Street to allow construction of the southeast Fourth Street Storm Pump Station project. Is anyone here in opposition to that item? In opposition to that item? Likewise seeing none. Is, the third one is request from Farmco Properties represented by Michael Wolnerman? Wolnerman, okay, I didn't blow that this time. To rezoned property located at 2679 Murray Street. Is there anyone here in opposition to that item? In opposition to that item? Any of the commissioners want any of those removed? Seeing none. Is there a motion? Greg's moving consent. All those in favor of moving the consent agenda, please signify by raising your right hand. Oppose, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. It passes. Moving on to item number four, it's request from Ophir Carmy for rezoning property located at 2620 Grand Avenue. That was on last, our last agenda. Determine whether or not the proposed amendment is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan and rezone from floodway to floodplain to allow for consideration of a conditional use for amusement enterprise business to allow reuse of the existing vacant go-kart track and miniature golf amusement complex. Jason, you presenting on this one?
Yeah. Chair members of the commission, Jason Madison with the planning staff. The item was continued so we could straighten out a notification and we did get that out. So this item is back before you. Nothing substantive has changed. Just showing you, here's a picture of the site. The essence of the staff recommendation basically boils down to how zoning relates to the federal floodway and floodplain designations. This map, the blue line shows kind of, this is the property and this is the approximate location of the line between the floodway and the floodplain. U1 zoning is generally, is associated with generally floodplain where the floodway zoning is, was developed for the actual, you know, floodway areas. So staff is supportive of rezoning the part that's in the floodplain to U1 by leaving the rest of the site in the floodway zoning. One, how we would distinguish or identify where that actual line is, because this is an approximation, would be the requirement that the applicant have a survey prepared that identifies where that, that grade point is and then a legal description is written based on that. That would need to be done and submitted prior to the city council meeting so we could have that as part of the, the public hearing processes. That's a mechanism or an approach that we've used in other similar circumstances like this. The one thing I do want to point out is that it obviously requires the applicant to have a survey prepared in the front end of doing a project, but that survey and engineering work is going to be required regardless if they are, even if the whole property is on U1 in order to comply with the city's floodplain development ordinance. So it's not, it's not work that is not necessary. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Greg?
So just if I can reiterate what you said, we need to know, or the city council needs to know ahead of time where that floodway, floodplain boundary is before the rezoning. We can't just say, "We want to rezone it to a line yet to be determined by a survey."
Correct. There has to be a legal description for the rezoning process.
So if he would find later, let's say that we agreed a staff rec and he would find later that the rest of his entire property is in the floodplain, which would allow him to do what he wants to do, he would come, have to come back and rezone the difference? Or could?
That's correct. I mean, the thing about the floodway designation, I mean, it's evolving, it changes over time and so...
And it's a fuzzy line.
Yeah, and, and right now we have the whole site zoned floodway and maybe at one time it wa, you know, that was the case, but with improvements that have been made, the floodway, the best information we have at this time is that only the kind of south and western triangle or half of the site is in the floodway at this time.
Any other comments? CJ?
I have a question. There's a floodgate real close by there that has been put down several times since I've been in Des Moines. How, what's the distance between this site and that floodgate on 63rd and the infamous bridge?
Um, I'm not sure.
Right there.
So, Greg, help me out, what do you think?
Less than a quarter mile.
Five to six hundred feet. That property is sixty, twenty-two, forty.
Aerial doesn't have a...
It's not a scale.
Right.
Five hundred-ish to the corner, maybe?
So it's five hun, approximately five hundred feet from the floodgate?
Yeah.
Okay. And there's also a trail that goes underneath the bridge, which is probably closer yet.
Yeah.
And that trail is flooded quite frequently and closed. So I think you're probably, with your staff recommendation, you're probably right on because there is a flood situation there that happens from time to time and it's more frequent than 100 years, because I'm not 100 yet. And I know that gate has went down twice already since I lived in Des Moines and I wasn't born here, so.
You may, you may feel that way, but you're not there.
No, I'm not. So I, I just wondered what the distance was.
Sure.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question, Mr. Chair. This Paljoys, did they have the survey done?
They're a grandfathered operation and actually, I mean, this site had a, you know, it's vacant long enough that it's lost its grandfather rights and so, you know, both of these areas were developed, established prior, but Paljoys obviously has stayed operating.
Ted?
Jason, if the bridge were there, would the bike trail go under it?
I believe that's the...
I think that's right.
It's right, right down there next to the creek that floods about 10 or 12 feet below everything else.
If you look at the aerial, you'll see, I mean, you can see the trail.
Yeah, I know where the trail is, I'm asking the question because...
I haven't seen the exact sign, I'm pretty sure I...
Because the trail's a good 10, 12, 15 feet below everything else, but yeah, but when it's closed in the past, it's, when Walnut Creek comes up a little bit, it does go over the trail, just like it does down in Waterworks. This, this, the, the old putt-putt has, and I wasn't at the meeting last week, or two weeks ago, but that, that does occasionally flood. None of the other things since I've been around have flooded. I don't think Paljoys has ever flooded since 93 anyway. And, but they're a little bit higher, but I, you know, I, I guess I missed the discussion last week, I'm trying to understand what the problem is.
CJ?
I also wanted to note that the city just paid for removal of two houses in that area that were constantly flooded. And I don't know the exact address of that, but two houses were just recently removed.
They're north of McDonald's.
So it does flood in there.
We were ultimately going to go to Board of Adjustments with this, was, was that...
It'll have to.
Yeah, it's, the uses, I'm glad you brought that up, I kind of glossed over that. The proposed use requires a conditional use permit even if it's on U1. So, and then obviously if part of the property or all the property is left as floodway, say the rezoning's not approved or only, or the staff rec is adopted, then they could seek a use variance.
And, and the applicant, or the applicant is, is not planning on building anything. The, just, there's a, I believe, a brick and mortar building that's there that houses the restrooms, everything else, I'll let him, of course, I'll let him talk, but there's absolutely nothing going to be built structurally on this property.
I'm not aware of any, anything of substance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Greg?
Are you familiar with the Raccoon River Baseball Park, or, I'm sorry, the Raccoon River Little League Baseball Park?
Down off of Park Avenue?
Yes.
Yeah.
Is that in a floodplain? I assume it is, because I've had to help go out there and fix it.
I would, I would be surprised if it's not, but I'm...
You know, to me, just sort of speaking to the board, I, I think this type of use and, and something like the baseball park I'm talking about are great uses in these types of areas. It, it makes a ton of sense to me and having raised children in Des Moines, having these types of venues, I think all of us would say, yeah, that's a good idea versus other things they may be doing. And so the fact that this has been here and I understand it's lost its rights, but bringing it back to life because it had been here and because I think these types of venues like the Little League make sense in these things to me, I would be in favor and I don't quite understand what you were saying Greg about we can't do it anyway because they don't have a survey, but, you know, I think I would be fun, or at least conceptually in support of the project and I would hope others would be as well.
Greg Jones?
Kent, can you put your other graphic up there that shows this blue line going through the middle? Right side flood, floodplain which allows him to have a building, left side floodway doesn't allow it. And that line, I believe, goes right through the concession's restroom building.
Correct.
Is that true?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, this is an approximation.
So potentially half the building can be serviced and used and half not. I'm uncomfortable based on what I know and having dealt with the Corps and those that decide what this fuzzy blue line is, for us to decide that's not the fuzzy blue line. So unfortunately, I think we need proof and that's a survey.
I, I understand what you're saying.
I really wish the whole, you know, we could just drag this blue line to the left 60 feet and we've solved the problem.
I guess that's where I'm kind of going and I don't really know the steps, but, you know, maybe it takes that data, but maybe there's a two-foot-high berm built around this thing and we call it a levee and we move on, I mean...
Still need a survey.
I understand. I'm just saying, conceptually, I think this is a great reuse of this property.
Jason, this survey came from the recent Corps of Engineers study, did it not?
Well, the, the illustration with where the, yeah, that's from the most recent information, but what we're talking about is...
Was it like 2,000 or...
But it's not a site-specific engineered, you know, land survey, which is what we're suggesting as part of a re, you know, the rezoning, which, and which would be required for development with, in conformance with the city's floodplain development regulations.
But that would mean that the applicant would have to come forward with a survey.
Correct, and they could do that between the planning zoning commission meeting and the city council meeting.
Okay. Ted?
Jason, the Sands Volleyball Club and then the, and then the soccer fields that are behind this, I guess the soccer fields don't have buildings maybe, but the volleyball club does, or the volleyball...
Yeah, and I don't have the map with the, the little squiggly line that goes down that far, if that's what you're wondering where that delineated.
And, and they would be the same condition as Paljoys that their grandfathered?
I assume that that's been, it's been there as long as I can remember, but...
Well, there used to be the plantation drive-in.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Ted, do you remember, no, I'm kidding. Any, any other comments, questions? Is the applicant present?
Yes.
Come forward, please give us your name and address.
Ophir Carmy, 93259 Street, Des Moines, Iowa.
Anything you want to add from what you talked about last?
Yeah, I'm just wondering about all this floodplain, floodway. My question is, what's the problem? I mean, if there is a flood, we're going to have an notice. I move my stuff and I'm gone. I come back, I clean it, it's a brick building, it's a block buildings, so there is no, nothing going to move, move away from that.
So, so you understand that's not a decision we make, that's a decision made by the Corps of Engineers as...
Yeah, yeah, I understand that, but I, I'm, I'm just trying to figure out, is that a risk to anybody? No. There, I mean, the life is not going to be lost there because if there is a flood, nobody's going to come over there, so, I mean, and this is my, my question is, what's the difference? If it was there and it was there for...
If you, if you want to move that line, you're going to need a survey in which to do it with. So you're going to have to go out and hire an engineer so they can come in and they can say, "We ought to move that line and here's why." It's what it is. The Board of Adjustment's going to give you some relief too.
You've worked with staff?
At the city?
On this, the city staff?
Yeah, I did.
It seems to me you need to spend some more time with staff to understand exactly what is required. I think, I get the sense, I wasn't here last week or two weeks ago, I get the sense everybody'd like to see you be able to do what you want to do, but the...
Yeah, so say yes.
But, but the, there, there's going to be some requirements beyond here is what I'm, what I'm hearing.
As I said before, I don't believe we can say yes because we don't have the power to move that line. The only way that that line gets moved is by you getting more technical data than the Corps uses. The Corps uses cross-sections as they come down the center line of whatever stream there is. So this line is, I call it fuzzy, it's drawn on this map, but it's not accurate. But that doesn't mean that we have the ability to allow you to violate that line by zoning. We can't allow anything in the floodway. Any construct, we can't.
I'm not doing any construction, I'm not doing anything, I'm doing exactly the same thing that used to be there.
But you, but you don't have rights to use the facilities that are already there. Yes, it doesn't make any sense, but I don't think we can, the best we can hope for is allow you to prove that that line is in a different place than the Army Corps thinks it is, and that's by a survey which is more accurate data. It's the best we can do, I think.
It absolutely is the best we can do. Any other questions or comments?
I guess I'll make a comment because I know this is confusing and I agree with what everyone is saying, that we would like to have it there, but it gets into a procedural thing, we don't have the right to make that decision. So I guess, Jason, I'm wondering is, is it up to us to vote this and agree with the staff to deny it and then he goes to Board of Adjustment?
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a couple of things that are happening. We have zoning locally that we've adopted that we've tried to base off of the floodway and floodplain information, but there is the federal regulations that are kind of, we could rezone this to C2, but it's still, he's going to have to go through that, that process that, that Greg described regardless of what we do. So I think what he's asking is, you know, to make the, to give him the ability to at least, you know, go get a conditional use permit for the whole site and not a use variance and a conditional use permit. As for planning staff, from a professional standpoint, we look at the purpose of the zoning and try to make a decision based off what, what makes sense, what's, you know, planning rationale from a broad, you know, long-term perspective, and that's why we're recommending tying our zoning to the best information we have, you know, for the federal floodway and floodplain information. The other thing I do want to point out, and maybe Phil could speak to this a little better than I can, but the decisions we make also impact the community's participation in the flood insurance program. I don't know if you want to add anything to that. If there's any questions about that, Phil can discuss that in greater detail.
Jason, we need to go forward with this and pass this though because this is the current existing floodway floodplain as we understand it from the Corps of Engineers. So what we're doing is we're adjusting what we've already had to the current standards.
Correct, that's, and then the other thing too is that, I mean, you're making a recommendation to city council, there's still time for the applicant to do more homework and research and explore prior to the council taking up the item, so it's not, your decision isn't like going to bind...
You can kind of give him some names of people who could assist him, right? You guys are going to give him some names of people who could assist him?
Yeah, that's, that's not a problem.
Okay.
I just have a quick question, I know it's not our decision, but if he did go to Board of Adjustment, could he get the conditional use permit without doing the survey?
If you're asking from a, theoretically, if the zoning is applied down as U1, then yes, but the problem is, is once he comes in the door to get a permit to do anything, get his certificate of occupancy, he's going to have to do a site plan and do lands, bring the site into conformance. The first thing that's going to be asked is you have got to provide a survey, engineering information that, to, to show that the site's going to comply with the floodplain development regulations, which are a separate chapter in the city code, so they're independent of zoning.
Any other questions? Do you have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right, thanks. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? Anyone? Anyone to speak in opposition?
Can I see what I can?
Well, I'm going to give you some rebuttal time if you need it, all right? In opposition? Likewise, seeing none?
What I'm trying to do, and I said that the last meeting, is to do something nice for the community, to do something, you know, and all this money that's going to go to, to just get approved, to make anything nice for the city of Des Moines...
You know, Ophir, not to interrupt you, but we all know that and we're all amenable to that. The bottom line is, the federal government's made a determination as to where that line's going to be and we can't change it.
So if I do the survey, I don't know how much it's going to cost.
Well, and talk to staff because they can certainly help you put you in touch with engineering firms that could kind of come in and maybe adjust that line. And you've got time before it goes to city council.
Okay.
Okay? Greg?
But there's no guarantees.
Right, well, there is no guarantee. That's right. I mean, the engineering firms could come in with a bad result.
Could be worse.
That's right. Any, any other, I'm going to close the public hearing. Is there any questions, comments? Seeing none? We got, I was going to ask for that. CJ?
I'm the staff.
All right. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Pose same sign. One in opposition, two in opposition. Okay. You get those? Ted?
I want to just approve it, which we can't do.
We were musing over the fact that the federal employee that put that blue line there is probably on furlough and couldn't help us with this issue today.
That's exactly right. Okay, item number four passes. Moving on, we already continued item number five. Item number six, request from Golinski Family Real Estate LLC represented by Gary Golinski to rezon property located at 5035 Hubble Avenue. The subject property is owned by Homemakers Plaza, Inc. A is to determine whether or not the proposed amendment is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan and B amend the 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land designation from commercial auto-oriented small-scale strip development to planned business park. Jason, are you presenting on this one? Oh, I'm sorry. And C is to rezon from A1 Agricultural District to M1 Light Industrial District to allow reuse and redevelopment of the property for warehousing and mini warehousing. Is it A1 right now, Jason?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. I don't know how they have that. Grandfather?
Passing.
Should I stall Jason?
I'm good. We're just, we're getting organized over here. Passing around the response cards. So this is an aerial showing the subject property at Hubble and Broadway. Response map, cards and letters being passed around from the two property owners, actually three property owners, excuse me, that responded.
I know.
We have a photograph here looking at, back towards the site, towards the south and west, the existing building. And then looking east. I wanted to show you this map here. The basis of the staff recommendation really is, or at least a starting point that we worked from is what we did with some properties in the Broadway Business Park here on East 50th Street. This is the subject property. Green is the A1 zoning, which is zoning that a property is automatically assigned when it comes into the city newly annexed. These are, have been rezoned limited M1 and the use restrictions that, and some of the design restrictions that were the basis of these limitations, we are incorporating into this. And I want to point out, this is also a storage operation, so we felt there was really a good relationship with making sure that we have conditions of development that first, you know, cover the specific location and the details of that site, but also ensure that it relates well to what's going on around it and what the expectations were of other development in the area.
Jason, I'm looking at your map here and this has nothing essentially to do with this, but right across the street, we just rezoned or zoned in that come and go. Is that A1?
The map just hasn't been updated yet.
Oh, all right, all right, that was my question.
No, that was PUD if I'm memory circle.
Yeah, it was, and that's why I'm saying it.
Yeah, it just takes a while for it to get processed. So just to get back, this is the map, an aerial of the property, the existing building and kind of the development around it. The, this is, the applicant has a kind of a development sketch, a concept. Obviously, a full-fledged site plan would have to be developed and the site had to be brought into conformance with landscaping and buffering and stormwater management. But this does a good job of generally giving you an idea of the concept they're doing or looking at. So we have removal of the western portion of the building with construction of your traditional mini storage units. And then the remaining portion of the building, and as I understand it, this building as well would be more for like your traditional warehousing type storage, so not mini warehousing. So we have a mix here of warehousing and mini warehouse storage. Showing a detention basin down here and the parking up front, generally leaving it in the same configuration, eliminating one of the drive approaches. Now, as I mentioned, this would all have to be developed in accordance with current landscaping setback, buffering requirements.
Jason, just to make sure, that kind of roadway there right on the front of that property, that's that frontage road, isn't it?
Correct, this is the frontage road.
Okay, that's, all right.
Yeah, and then you have Broadway up here. So the staff recommendation, because of the long list of conditions, they're based on prohibited uses, the staff recommendation is fairly lengthy. I don't know if you want me to read it into the record, but I'll just kind of go through it relatively quickly, at least with these use restrictions. So like I said...
I think we're all right with that. I think everybody can read those.
Okay.
And if there's specific questions, I'm sure you would like to take those.
Sure. Yeah, and that's, and I was just going to gloss over. Basically, as I mentioned, it's the same limitation of uses as what's been developed around. And then B, we get into some standards for the mini warehouse use, for any mini warehouse use, that all storage unit, building walls facing external to the site shall consist of stone, masonry, brick exterior material or other durable materials approved by the community development director, and that no storage access doors shall be ordered toward a public street adjoining residentially zoned or zoning or development or towards the west property line. So how that applies to this arrangement is that no doors, this would need to be reconfigured, no doors facing the west. This is a PUD, single-family developed in the south, so no doors facing that. And then obviously, no doors to the north facing the right-of-way.
Jason, could you zoom out?
Thanks, Greg. So what I was pointing at as I was rambling, this west property line, this is the future single-family development, so no doors towards here and towards the west and towards the public right-of-way to the north. Another condition is that any fencing along the northwest and south perimeters of the site shall consist of wrought iron style fencing, basically avoid any chain link fencing. That wouldn't preclude the requirement for buffering, so it may be something where, and I need to clarify that, that for buffering requires a residential, the M1 district has residential protection where there's a 25-foot setback for buildings and the outdoor storage, which we're recommending a prohibition of outdoor storage, and then a 10-foot setback for any parking maneuvering areas, and then some landscaping, a six-foot tall opaque screen. So that condition doesn't preclude any of that, those screening requirements. It's just basically what we're getting at is that you have mini warehouse use, which are fenced in typically. We want to make sure that the perimeter around that is wrought iron and not chain link.
Is the applicant all right with these conditions?
We have not heard back from the applicant on the conditions. And then prohibition of outdoor storage, some comments on lighting. All facades on the exterior walls of any building facing a public street must be comprised of no less than 20% windows, doors or masonry materials such as brick, stone, decorative precast. Then G talks about overhead doors, and this is for, you know, like warehouse type use. That's why it's in here separate from the mini warehouse design guidelines. And then the other thing is we felt that, given the visibility of the site, that it should be developed with C2 landscaping versus M1. C2 landscape standards generally require about twice as much plant material. And so we felt that this is a gateway into Des Moines and it's important to have that additional plant material. And just getting back to your comment, Dan, with these, the applicant and these conditions, we have not heard back from the applicant, but these conditions are, were taken from other development in the area, so we feel that it's fair to apply them to this development as well, including the one, not just the uses that I didn't read, but also the design guidelines that I did read through are part of the other development. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Greg?
If I was reading those two opposition letters, right, they seem to both share the same concerns about potential auto display and I think it was auto parts salvage or something like that. Don't you have under your number 20 sort of the answer that no, there wouldn't be any of that? Or am I just reading...
Yeah, and we felt that, I believe those letters came in prior to them getting the staff recommendation. I did email it to them and I asked, I did hear back from the Broadway mini storage and I think he still had some concerns. I did not hear back from Hubble. I asked them specifically because we, they contacted us first. I don't know if that satisfied, I would think that, I mean, we agreed with their concerns and that's why these conditions are in here.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? Thank you, Jason. Is the applicant here? If we could please have them come forward, give us your name and address.
Gary Golinski, 3501 Aspen Drive, West Des Moines.
Jared Johnson, 3721 Drive. We actually have a few other pictures here for you. This is just a concept.
Just lay them right down there on the platform.
This is just a concept. I did want to show you the front of the building, what we do plan on doing to the front of the actual park we were wanting to keep. We would like to put these panels up with a long storefront. This here is a type of granite that we would put up, so the front of the building will totally change. Here's another site plan that we have for you, too. As you can see, this 20,000 square foot parcel here would be the front of this, and then this would be where your new storage units are. Again, it's just a concept. Our idea right now is to get it to industrial and then we'll look for a user and base it off of what the user will need.
Okay. Anything else?
Unless he has something.
Well, no, I guess we just are here because we need to change the zoning or we can't proceed and do anything because it's zoned agricultural. And as far as anyone saying we're going to do anything auto-related, I don't know where they came up with that one. It's, we have no intention whatsoever of doing that.
Will?
Mr. Golinski, your name is rather an unusual name. This is a personal question, having nothing to do with what we're doing now.
Well...
Well, I'll be brief, if you allow me.
Sir, I worked about 20 years ago with the Golinskis at the Pickle Bar Deli.
Yeah, my uncle Eli and Barbara.
And what is the status of...
Eli's passed away probably three or four years ago and Barbara is in Cedar Rapids. She's got dementia.
Okay, moving right along.
But thanks, thank you for asking.
Anyone...
Oh, sorry.
Are you in agreement with the recommendations that the staff has stated?
Well...
They're quite numerous.
Yeah, I, the only one I guess I possibly could have an objection with is if this is going to be industrial, there is the possibility that you would have a contractor that would want to store outside because, you know, we've got quite a bit of square footage there and that would be our only, which we do not have one in mind now, but wouldn't you say that could be a concern? Because it is an industrial park and if you had a contractor, for instance, they may want to, I would think, store some things outside. Other than that, that's the only objection I think I could really, really see.
Any, any other comments, questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please step forward, give us your name and address.
My name is Dave Marshman from 4605 Eightieth Place in Urbandale. I'm the president of Homemakers Furniture, and I guess I just wanted to mention that our family bought this facility and they built our business. We started in 1974 and 39 years ago. And it served our company and our family well for the 35 years that we had it. We outgrew it and so we vacated it in 2009, which is, our business just got too large for that area, for that property. And I'm encouraged to see the sketches and the plans that the Golinski family has for this property. The part of the building that they're going to be tearing down is actually the part of the building that was the oldest. It was built in the late 50s, I believe, and the portion that they're retaining is the part that we built, one of our additions in 1978. So it looks like a very nice facility that they're proposing and I hope it's, I hope the facility and the area serves their family well as it did ours for 35 years. So I wish them the best of luck.
Thank you. Wait a minute, before you, any questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, anyone here in opposition to the application, please come forward. In opposition to the application, please come forward. Give us your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Brad Vanderlinde and we're the neighboring property, Broadway Storage at 4933 Northeast 46th Avenue. But we're urging you to pass this on to the city council as not recommended. On the surface, it would seem like an identical use of self-storage would be a good use of the property. We kind of understand self-storage's demand and we did a 50,000 square foot expansion in 2010 and we've looked at this property as a possible alternative at that time and we didn't think the project was feasible. One of the concerns I think you should have as commissioners is whether this project is bankable, whether a banker would lend money on a risky project like this. I know our project is still running with a 20% vacancy rate, so it may not be able to be approved. The other thing is that this is on a prime corner, you know, in Des Moines that has promising redevelopment potential, ideally probably as an R3 zoning use for apartments. I think that would be the highest and best use for the property. And welcome any questions you have.
Any questions? Thank you. Anyone else to speak in opposition to the application? Opposition? Seeing none? Need some rebuttal time?
The only thing I have to say is, I don't understand. If that was the case, then this gentleman told my realtor that he had made an offer to buy the property to expand his business, so I guess I'm in a little bit of a loss there. And as far as a bank loaning money, I don't really need a bank, so that's, thank you.
I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Do we have a motion? Greg?
You said.
Sessom moved. Any discussion, questions? Tim?
The only concern I have, Mr. Golinski said that there could be a thought of storing heavy equipment outside and that's a slippery slope. I don't want to see this, you know, too close to homes. That was it. I will support the staff also.
Any other discussion?
Question of staff, well, I guess actually of the board, too. Question of staff, well, I guess actually of the board, too. Would staff or the board entertain the idea of a solid fence to allow construction equipment or whatever? I mean, is there any sort of opportunity to give them that...
I think we need to be consistent with the restrictions that have been put on the Broadway Business Park that adjoin it. I think that, I think that's our perspective.
That's fair. Thanks.
Okay. Anything else? Seeing none, all those in favor, please sign, moving staff, please signify, please signify by raising your right hand. Easy enough for me to say. Opposed, same sign, it passes. Thank you. Is it getting late yet? Okay. Moving on to item number seven, request from Raccoon Street Warehouse, represented by Kurt Polliay to rezone property located at 301 and 309 Southeast 8th Street. A is to determine as to whether or not the proposed amendment is in conformance with the Des Moines 2020 Community Development Community Character Plan. B is amend the Des Moines 2020 Community Character Plan to revise the existing future land designation from downtown support commercial to general industrial. C, rezone to remove DO Downtown Overlay District, which prohibits certain uses and requires compliance with design guidelines in the City Code, Section 82-214.9. Rezone from M1 and light industrial to M2 heavy industrial to allow a future request for conditional use to allow a beverage container recycling business. Jason, are you presenting on the floor?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Before you is an aerial showing the subject property, Raccoon Street to the south, East Elm to the north, Southeast 8th to the west, and Southeast 7th to the east. It's north of the MLK extension. You can see the part that's been constructed and is continuing to the east in the East Village area, kind of south of the Capitol grounds and East Village proper being to the north and west. Response cards going around, response map. Just photograph of the building. This is Raccoon looking back towards the east, so this is the site. And then we have a kind of a concept from the applicant. The building that you saw in that picture in the, I guess you call it foreground, would be removed and parking would be developed, so you'd have the remaining building. You know, looking this, you know, we, as staff, we looked at, you know, what makes sense in this area for its future, what makes sense with the, in corresponding it to the downtown and to the, its designation in the future land use plan is downtown support commercial. It's just north of MLK extension. There's a lot of planning work that's gone on for the Market District, which is the area, kind of, it's a term we're calling for the area, it's really, you know, kind of Southeast Village. Putting that all together, we're recommending denial of the request. We don't feel that M2 zoning in this area, given the current land, future land use designations and the other planning effort that's been going on and with the future of this area, makes sense for M2 zoning, so happy to answer your questions you might have.
Any questions? Jason, I do have a question. How close is this to waterways?
Um...
Right behind it, isn't it?
It's quite a ways. I'm not aware of it being near a creek or anything. The river is quite a ways.
All right.
Yeah. Capitol of the hill or whatever is up this way. This is quite a ways south of East Village. The other thing to add before I sit down is that it is zoned M1 currently. There are a lot of uses that are allowed in the M1 district, so that was something else that went into our thought process. It's not really a hardship, so to speak.
Is the applicant present? Would you please come forward, give us your name and address?
Kurt Polliay, 31241, 250th Street, Waukees, Iowa. I guess I would like to start off with, Mr. Chairman, I am impressed that you pronounced my last name correctly. I must only assume that you must like pizza or have a lot of friends with the Des Moines Police Department.
I spent a lot of time when I was at Northwest Missouri State eating spaghetti on Sunday night, where all the starved young men would go and young women would go to stock up for the week.
A lot of people don't know, there's one down there, that's for sure. I belong with the group called Raccoon Valley Street Warehouse LLC. We purchased this property earlier this year. We purchased this property with knowing that we are in a downtown overlay district. We totally agree with the zoning that's going to take place down the road. We disagree with the fact that it's going to happen quickly in this area. Along with us agreeing with that, we've, we had our neighborhood meeting, and we had no disagreements from anybody, and matter of fact, everybody was happy that we were improving the property. In regards to the M1 zoning that we currently have, yes, there are a lot of companies that could move into this property. We agree with that, that there are. The problem with being M1 and what, the economy that we had and everything that happened, there was a lot of vacant space with industrial buildings a few years back, and there is only so many companies that were looking for that type of property. And when you look at zoning, and this being M1, all the companies that can handle M1 zoning, and this being M2, there's quite a difference. There's not a lot of options for companies that need the M2 zoning. We were fortunate enough to have Crink Manufacturing look at our building and strike an agreement with them on the premise that we can acquire the M2 zoning. Again, I'm going to go back to the M1 and that there are a lot of uses. One of the biggest things that we heard at our public meeting was that the tenants were very happy that we were only going to have one tenant. Matter of fact, we just had one of our neighborhoods just bring a card up, too. I could drop this off, and it states that they're happy that we're going to improve the property and that there's only one tenant. The previous owner had multiple tenants in this property coming and going at different hours of the night, and that's one of the things that the neighborhood was very happy with that we were doing. The second thing is that we're going to improve the property where this was an area at one time, maybe we could all agree on that, was not very desirable. It was desirable to us because of the downtown overlay, and so we're down here now, we're going to spend some money, and the neighborhood appreciates that. So I don't know if I can pass that by.
We're asking to receive and file it.
Who I have with me is Doug Webb. He's the president of Crink, and I'd like to have him explain a little bit about his company, if you don't mind.
Doug Webb, 12368 Sunset Terrace, Clive, Iowa. Crink is a company that was developed in 1979. The liquor, excuse me, the deposit law was passed where the distributors had to go out and they had to pick up their containers every week from anything they sold in the state that was covered by the deposit law. That's what we do now. We're a company that serves as a third party with the distributors to go out and pick up their product. We employ 38 employees. We have 18 tractors, 27 trailers. We go out and pick up the product, we back it back to our facility, and we process it. When we process that, it's all done inside. We don't do anything outside. We are currently located down on Market Street. We're in with the waste management facility now. We're right in the middle of them. What we want to do is move away from that facility and move to this facility because we want to set up what they call a redemption center. The redemption center would tie into the plant that we have there. The redemption center would be located in the building on the far right. What that redemption center would do is we would allow individuals to come down and deposit their cans, their bottles, and different types of plastics within the city. We feel that this location is central. There was a facility that was there earlier named Patterson's. Patterson ran into fiscal, excuse me, some financial difficulties and closed. But at that particular facility, they were taking in over 80 million containers a year, which now could possibly go into the dump. So we feel with that location that where we would have the opportunity to go, we'd be able to open up a recycling center and continue to do what we do as far as processing our commodities, which is aluminum, plastic, and cardboard and glass. And again, like we said, we've really looked at, if the facility has enough room inside, we wouldn't have to do any of that on the outside, it'd all be done on the inside. So that's what we're looking to the future to use this building for. Any questions?
Any questions? Tim?
The redemption center is at, well, most, all stores. I don't think that there's a lot that probably fall into this category, but they smell. They smell bad. And I can't imagine, how do you control the scent in an operation this large, let alone a small 10 by 20-foot room at most of the grocery stores in the state?
So what we've done is we've traveled the United States. We went to Oregon. Oregon opened up a facility, and this is what our intent to do. Let's say you're sitting at home, and you want to recycle stuff. Basically, what you'll do is you'll get a sack, a plastic sack, you'll put all your plastics in it. You then will take and put a UPC code on the outside of it, bring it to our facility. We'll have a debit card for you. You'll scan that debit card, we'll scan that product, you dump it off there, we count it, and we debit your account within 72 hours. What we're trying to do is we're going to try to set a different precedence for recycling in the state of Iowa. We're going to put a brand-new facility within that building that'll facilitate the convenience and the education for people to recycle, and that's what we're trying to do. And we feel that location there is central, so anybody who wants to travel, we've already looked at 27 other locations within the metro in the different areas around. We feel this is, because there is no recycling, single stream recycling downtown. So we feel there's a great opportunity for the convenience there. We're going to use it as an educational facility, too. Can I answer your question?
Would this...
No, I understand you might have new protocol that you're trying, but how is the smell controlled in the heat in a warehouse? The bacteria?
So basically, let me give you a different picture here. When the product gets to us, it basically has already went through what you go through at the store level. So our plant does not really particularly have a scent issue at this particular point. In fact, actually, you're more than welcome to come down and look at our plant now. Most of our stuff that comes in, there are some opportunities, obviously, but there is an scent issue within that.
Christine.
Would this central facility be an opportunity to consolidate and get those redemption centers out of the grocery stores?
That would be their choice. It says in the law, if a redemption center is within three to eight miles to you, you can make that choice, that you can tell the consumer that they have to go to the redemption center. Again, some of those stores don't want to do that because they want the customer traffic from the cans. That's what we ran into, and that's why it's dicey, and the location we would be going, we would serve. But again, there's, most of those individuals down there would like us to take that off their hands, to his point. Within a grocery store where you're shopping, there's an opportunity.
Greg.
Do you have any images, 3D images, elevation, site plans, anything of what you're looking to do to the exterior of the project?
This is, I can introduce myself. Dave Harmeyer, 2486 Street, Urbandale. I'm with Vista Real Estate. We're part of the ownership group. This is what it's going to look like. So we're actually going to tear down the dilapidated building in the middle and then the 6,000 square foot building on the end, which will allow us then to put in the five truck docks that are required by the operation. All of their bottle redemption is done inside the building, and then put in the parking lot, and then improve the lot out here with birmingham trees and a parking lot as well. So that's what the site plan looks like. And then the elevation would look like this. So it's a vast improvement to the area. Like I said, with Kurt, we were excited to do this because we shared in the value of the city long-term, 10, 15 years, that this is going to be a redevelopment opportunity. That's why we bought the property. We don't have debt on it. We paid cash for it. We're just waiting for it to go. When they came to us with this idea to rent this facility, tear some buildings down and make it work, we thought it was a fantastic use. We said they wanted to do a 20-year, a five-year lease with multiple options. We said five-year lease, five-year option. We wanted to stop at 10 years so that if redevelopment does occur in 10 years, we have the opportunity to engage in that. Right behind this building, there's a tent city going on. In fact, a guy in our neighborhood meeting last night came out all beat up. This building that we're going to tear down has had inhabitants in it on and off, having an operation like this, that these guys are very professional, very well-financed. Their ownership group is the distributors of the, as I understand it, the beer distributors and pop distributors collectively do this to redeem these. These guys are very professional in what they do. Every person we've met with in the area, we had to send out 11 postcards, was very supportive of what's going on. We've had no one object to this. Little bit of history to point out in your packet, which we didn't know when we bought the property, okay? We didn't go into that kind of detail, but Chuck Haas owned this building, had owned it for a long time. When the city came in and did a rezoning, massive rezoning in this area, this property was included in it. He didn't even know about it. Went back and talked to him about it. He didn't even recall it. Didn't matter to him. He was using it for RV storage and all kinds of different uses. The properties on three borders of this are M2 and remain M2 today. So this is, this is right in the middle of M2, and it would allow us to use a use. It's a much more professional use, a very well-financed operation, and that's all we're trying to do is get somebody in here to cash flow a property, make some improvements so that we can get to that 10-year mark or 15-year mark, let's say if it gets there, but contractually work 10 years with this group. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you. I'm going to go open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of the application? In favor of the application, please come forward. Seeing none, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the application? In opposition to the application? Likewise, seeing none?
Can I ask a couple more questions?
You have a question? Well, why don't we close? Well, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and Greg, you had a question you wanted to ask of the applicant?
Yeah, I had one more question for the applicant. I'm familiar with other recycling centers that are literally in downtown areas. There's one coming to my mind, and I'll go find it. And what makes that one, I think, successful is it's extremely accessible to the public, and it really takes a strong attitude about education. And when I saw that 3D rendering, I was really hoping for, you know, you were going to do something to sort of, whether it was through windows or something, that you would sort of engage the public in some way, and then I start to see some sort of benefit to, you know, that education process, and really, I just saw a bunch of nice trees. So I was wondering sort of your thoughts on that and...
Again, he had the rendering of the outside. Down on the right-hand side, we do the redemption center. It'll be a little bit down the road. We need to move our other facility first. I can send you some photographs from where our objective is, of where we're trying to go from Oregon. I can show you. It is very friendly, just like you said. It's very automated. It's very clean. It's got cleaning tables. It's very customer-friendly. To your point, even with that, in fact, we are looking at rebranding our particular company to do exactly what you said, because there's two ways recycling is successful, convenience and education. That's it. It's those two things that we have to do. But to be honest with you, we have to have a facility that we can show what we would like to do and then start the education process, because if we don't have it, to this gentleman's point here, Tim, if we start going it, and they've got to go to a facility that's dirty, a facility that's not well-organized, and it's not convenient, it's not even going to work. They're not even going to bring the product to us to, for us to facilitate the recycling. So I agree with what you're saying. Again, it's on a timeline for us to get that done with that building. So I don't have any outside drawings of that, but I can send you some photographs from Oregon of what we're trying to do.
Thanks. Any other questions, John?
I have a question for him, but I have a comment.
Okay, what, let's get a motion on the floor first.
Okay, I'll move staff.
Okay, moving staff. Go ahead, and then we'll get to Jack.
My comment is that I am very, very, very interested in putting a recycling center there. I see no problem with it. My problem is zoning M2, what are we doing, M2?
M2.
I would rather see a variance on that property rather than to have this zoning go with it. Because if you folks, like you say, you're only, you're thinking right now of a 10-year option, I'm thinking that if you do not continue with this past the 10 years, then we've got a zoning that possibly we don't want in that area.
Any other comments? Questions, Shirley?
I have a question. I think maybe this is a question for Kurt. You made a statement that you had a neighborhood meeting? With the East Village Historic folks?
I've met with Josh a couple of times. As a matter of fact, I spoke with Josh before I came down here.
Okay, I guess I'm a little bit puzzled because we had seen two cards. I think 11 were sent out. We saw two, you brought in one. I'm just wondering, who were the, how many people were there and who were they?
That came to the meeting?
Yes.
We had three, three people. We had Jesse, I'm not good with names, Jesse, Maria, and the gentleman that owns Diamond Oil.
These were people from the East Village Historic Neighborhood Association?
These were people that are our neighbors. Nobody from the Historic East Village, the association came.
Didn't Josh turn in the card?
I believe Josh should have turned it in.
Oh, right, the neighborhood association that turned in the card was supportive, so he didn't have to.
People didn't, huh? They didn't turn in our card.
Okay.
Because I spoke with Josh, you know, I spoke with him today and I spoke with him probably three or four days ago also.
When was the neighborhood meeting?
Can we have you, so the recording picks up otherwise Kathy's talking. Sure, I apologize, I'm sorry. Of course, kind of here.
Yeah, that's all right, that's okay.
This is kind of scary.
No, we're not, we're not, we're not. We're okay.
I'm sorry. So I spoke with Josh Garrett. He's the president of the Historic East Village. And I don't believe Josh has any objections. And then I spoke with a gentleman by the name of Mark also.
He liked the idea of a redemption center for people to come down there and serve the community.
Well, the reason I'm asking is, you know, in most instances, that's one of the things that we look at, is what the neighborhood association people recommend because it is their neighborhood.
It's my understanding, and I don't know, I'm sure you have the cards there, that Josh was going to turn it in, that he was in favor of it. If it's not there, I'm sorry. That was my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay. Tim?
Yeah, and just to reintegrate, Mr. Pagliai, is that correct?
Okay, no, you don't need pizza.
Pagliai. Well, only on the south side, my friend. As a rule, neighborhood officers that are supporting something will always give you a letter of recommendation. And that's just something that I would think we would see from them.
From Josh?
So they were required to respond one way or another?
They do as pretty much a courtesy as a leader of the neighborhood to let us know how they stand.
I just want to, I mean, they, the neighborhood association was notified. And I believe, and they've been on the notification list that the applicant got and the applicant reached out to him and you had a conversation with him, right?
With Josh twice, Mark.
So I mean, there was an opportunity for him to either pass the word on or provide something, right? We can't force people, I mean to-
Sure.
Can I say one thing?
We were under the impression he was actually going to come.
Yeah, there was a chance that he was going to come. One thing that Josh really, really liked was the fact that currently, he has no response from this area. He cannot get anybody, any of the neighbors, anybody to join or converse or participate in the Historic East Village from that area. And that's coming straight from Josh. So he's happy that, that he sees that with us and us being positive and pro for the downtown overlay that, you know, he's happy about that. So that I do know. He just doesn't get any response from that area.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Jack?
Dave, was your lease arrangement contingent on changing the zoning? Or will the lease fly with the use variance?
It's not specific to one or the other, just that they have to be able to get an occupancy.
And then Jason, is this an island of M1 surrounded by M2?
No, I think it's, there's a, I can get the map back out, but there isn't any M2 in the area. It's pretty much all M1 until you get further into the East Village where it's switched to like C3.
Let's get the map.
We'll get the map out.
Yeah, I thought I heard that Dave or somebody say that they're surrounded on three sides by M2.
Are you? Maybe they, maybe they are, I was-
Gentlemen, when you talk, we need you to identify yourself because the secretary's having a heck of a time up there.
Let me find a map. Perhaps, you know, maybe I misspoke, but let me.
And I can talk while you're looking. I guess my concern is changing the zoning, if we can get the same thing done with the use variance. I came to that conclusion independent of Joanne. And, you know, we've got to kind of keep in mind what's going on with our market district. I know that the owners are sensitive to that. I don't, I don't have a problem with the use. I think it's a good idea, but I don't know if I want to change the zoning to do that.
We have M1 zoning and we have some M2. When we went through and downzoned, and here's some M1 down here. So there is M2 zoning that was left.
We went through that process, the downzone, kind of a citywide process. We did leave any place that was in a current use that would require M2 zoning was left. So there are a few pockets of M2 in the area. But there, the bulk, you know, to the north is M1, we have R2A and then M1.
But both sides are M2.
There are to the east and west, yes. There's a low lake here and then this area here.
Those are Diamond Oil's fuel storage facilities?
Yeah.
I'll leave that map there.
All right.
What we have here is a butanolist. They're an oil distributor to asphalt companies. This is the oil that they use in asphalt, these big containers here. This is owned in two. What we have on this side is Diamond Oil Company. They're a distributor of oil and propane and those stuff came with two construction companies and homes and so forth. And we have M2 here and then M2 on both sides of us. We have railroad tracks behind us. And then beyond the railroad tracks would be the M1.
Greg? I'm not sure I heard an answer to the question you had about whether or not, or maybe you were just asking the applicant, but if it stayed M1 and them getting a conditional use. So they could go that route, is that correct? I guess I would then want to ask a question, why wouldn't the applicant do that? And is that not appropriate?
Just to clarify, to seek a use variance, you have to be denied zoning first. So they do have to go through this process.
That's what I wanted, to get the staff's, okay.
It's all we're trying to do is to get the user.
Anyone else? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing.
Thank you.
I think I've already done that. Do we have a motion? Sorry, I lost track of where we were at. All right. The recommendation is move staff. Staff's recommendation is to determine whether or not the proposed amendment's conformance with the 2020 community character plan. We'll take that one up first. And the staff's recommendation is that it is not. So, any questions?
I was just reading staff recommendation, part D. And am I reading this correctly? City staff would likely recommend denial of a use variance?
Right. Well, not a use variance, but change from M1 to M2.
Well, it says use variance here.
Let me clarify. That's just in there as a note to clarify, to put the applicant and everybody on notice. But it's not, if you recommend, if you approve the staff recommendation as your recommendation to city council, that's not going to be in there as part of your motion. That shouldn't be, that was not, that should have been like a separate note underneath it. That's what I'm getting at.
Okay, so-
It's a typo, we'll just leave it at that.
Actually, what it is, actually, what was meant to be said is to give them the opportunity for conditional use. Is that what I'm reading it? That's kind of how I read it.
That's more, let me just put it this way, is the way I would have done this, if I, in hindsight, would have been to push it, put this down here with a little asterisk that just advises the applicant that staff doesn't anticipate being supportive of a use variance, not make it part of the recommendation language. I think it's creating confusion.
Okay, okay. We're going to take up A first.
Do we need to strike that in the motion to move staff?
Yeah, when we get, when we get to that, we'll do that. A, all those in favor of staff's recommendation, everybody understand that, what it is? Signified by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Acclamation, Kathy. That passes. And B is to revise the land use designation and staff's recommendation is not to do that. Everybody understand that? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. The third one is to rezone property, or rezone to remove DO, overlay and that prohibits certain uses and requires compliance. Staff's recommendation is not to do that as well. Everybody understand? Any questions? Okay. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, same sign. And the last one is, as Jason indicated, rezone from N1 to M2. And then they're going to strike the latter part of that language.
You mean the last sentence?
Yeah, the last, the last part, well, actually, it's the whole sentence. The last part of the sentence, the last phrase to allow-
Just, just get rid of the last sentence.
Actually, yeah, the last phrase.
Here's what I'm trying to figure out. Is Jason and city staff telling us that no matter where these movements are, city staff is aginum? That's what I read. So they've already received an advisory opinion vis-a-vis seeking a use variance? At least what staff's recommendation is going to be. It's going to be up to the judges then to figure that out.
Good call, Jack. Everybody understand recommendation by staff? We're striking the last sentence. I'm sorry, I was looking at, I was looking at seven as opposed to the staff recommendation itself. Yeah, striking the last sentence. All those, all those in favors, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed? Greg?
Well, I have a question, I'm confused.
Vicky, Greg?
Yeah.
Got it? Okay.
Just letter D.
Just D, okay.
I know, it doesn't really fit A, B, and C, but, okay.
All right. That's our agenda and staff's, staff's recommendations have been, staff's recommendation has been approved. Any other, anything else for the good of the group? Seeing none, or adjourned?